The Board of Education meeting is called to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Secretary Holes.
We are all here tonight.
Approval of the agenda. The agenda is approved as presented before us. Celebrations of learning. Mrs. Stone.
Good evening. This summer, the Waterford School District launched its Summer of STEAM Camp Program, in which students from both inside and outside of the Waterford School District participated in a variety of camp opportunities throughout the summer. This evening, elementary art teacher Kelly Detterman is here to share information from her Maker Innovation Camp. We will hear information on the Little Engineers Robotics Camp. And we have a video to share from our district instructional specialist Elizabeth Kutchy, highlighting our Junior Hour of Code and Hour of Code camps.
Good evening. Thanks for inviting us to come. So this summer, as Ms. Carly shared, sorry, we introduced the Summer of STEAM Camps for Waterford, as well as we opened it to anyone who was willing to participate and sign their students up. It was housed at Riverside Elementary, which the nice piece to that was, we also had the food program there, so the students were able to participate in the breakfast and the lunch, depending on if it was a half-day camp or a full-day camp. The first camp that I will share was ran by Steve Schmidtka, who is a teacher at Waterford Kettering, and he is part of the robotics team. So his camp was called Little Engineers, and it featured about 10 elementary students. They took part in developing models using the LEGO 2.0 We Do Robotics, which led them through mechanical engineering, as well as civil engineering and programming. And Ms. Stone, well Carly, will put a video for us to see.
... So, and, okay, are we openly closed? Are you guys open for me? And then if water was coming down, is that closed? So which one's open? That one do you want to open there? And then, that's the closed?
The second set of camps that we're going to share are Hour of Code camps, which we actually had two different camps run. So our first Hour of Code camp was welcome 3rd through 5th graders, and we had 23 students participate in that. And they learned coding as far as how to start with block coding. Then the next week, we offered our Beyond Hour Code camp, which was for 6th through 10th graders, which we had 12 students participate in. Those students really started developing apps and using JavaScript. We actually had quite a few apps work, and were utilizing them on phones and iPods, so that they could try them out. The unique piece for this was, between all of the camps, and Kelly will share with you, we had quite a few students who, if they went to the first camp, ended up signing up for the next week, and the next week, because they kept wanting to explore the STEAM and how things worked.
Hi, I'm Kelly Detterman. So the camp that I ran, the STEAM Innovation Camp, had 15 students in elementary school, 3rd through 5th grade, but I also had three middle school students who came and were mentors in training. And I also brought in high school kids from Kettering, the Kettering Robotics Team, Our Lady of the Lakes Robotics Team, and the Brandon High School Robotics Team. I kind of have a little bit of people I know some other directions. But those kids came and mentored kids like Matthew Nye here, who is a 4th grader at Riverside, and he was part of our camp this summer. We had a, the kids had a lot of fun. We had an all-day camp, where they reversed engineered all kinds of electronics. We used engineering notebooks and created slime. We did all kinds of science projects that went with that. They got a little bit of coding, they did some Hour of Code, and then they also created an app that allowed younger students to actually draw symbols and shapes that were uploaded to create something that they could actually play on an iOS device. The kids actually did this during camp. They also participated a little bit with what we had going on at Riverside at the time. The SLAM program was going on, and the STEAM kids were there at the same time. They helped a little bit with the other kids, showing them how to make slime and doing that. It was a wonderful, a wonderful week, full day, a wonderful week. Matt's here, so he could answer a question or two, if you have something.
Board members.
Matt, thanks for being here tonight. What was your favorite part of the experience, do you think?
My favorite part was the Hour of Code, we used that in our team.
Because why?
The Hour of Code.
Oh, okay. And why did you like that so much?
Because I like, I always liked coding, and I never got to do it though, because I couldn't find an app that we could do that on, and then Hour of Code and that, I really liked it.
Cool. So do you do that now at home, using an app called Hour of Code? Is that what you're saying, or was it?
Well, no, he's on a computer.
On the computer? But you, do you still code like at home sometimes now?
Yeah.
Wow. I know places that have jobs open for you, so.
So you're in 4th grade, and how old are you?
Nine.
Nine. And you're coding. I'm much older, and I've never coded one line.
Way older.
Way older. That's amazing, and that's, I think, another hats off to this district that elementary kids are coding and doing engineering things, and setting you up for the future to be very successful. Wow.
He's gonna be Matt Zuckerberg.
He'll be in charge and all. I'll be good.
Go ahead, Joe.
I just wanted to thank you and all of the staff members who provided these just extraordinary opportunities for our kids. And my one wish and dream would be that more kids would take advantage of these opportunities, because that is incredible, to be able to do those kinds of things in a compressed amount of time. And it's during a time when, I'm not sure what they would be doing otherwise, but I can assure you, what they're learning during those camps will stay with them a lifetime and can only help to spur them onto more, more critical thinking and higher-level thinking skills, and possibly an interest or a passion that takes them into their next job and into their career. So I just really commend the Waterford School District for making these opportunities available, and I would encourage all of our families to be thinking a little bit outside the box, and to be, and to be considering these opportunities even for your youngest of students, because they are there, and you'd be amazed what kids can absorb, even when they're just kindergartners in 1st and 2nd and 3rd graders. So really amazing work. Thank you.
Matt, I have one more question. Will you do this, or something like this again next year?
I don't know.
You'd look forward to it, though? If the opportunity is there? Yeah? And you would tell a 3rd grader, "Hey, maybe you ought to try this next year"? You think you'd sell it for us, too?
Yeah. He'll be teaching it.
Good, thanks.
Good job, Matt.
Nice job, Mia.
Recognition of achievement. Mr. Holbrook.
Congratulations to Kettering varsity volleyball team. They took first place in the silver division this past weekend. Way to go, captains. Waterford-Mott Football hosted Armed Forces Recognition Night on September 9th. The evening included numerous representatives from all branches of the military, local veteran support groups, and different activities led by military personnel. Kettering will host Armed Forces Night tomorrow, as they take on Wald Lake Northern at 7:00 PM.
Any questions for Bill on those? Thank you, Bill.
Rob, go ahead.
I'll comment on top of that, for the Armed Forces Night tomorrow night at Kettering. All veterans get in free with ID, is that correct? Did I see that on a flyer somewhere?
I'm not sure about that.
That is correct.
That's correct.
Absolutely. So any veterans that have veterans' ID can get in to watch a wonderful football game for free. Beautiful night.
And it's gonna be a good game, too. Kettering versus Northern should be very competitive.
I think it's supposed to be a big harvest moon, it's pretty good to come up over Kettering like that, so it'll be a beautiful night.
Thank you, Bill. Information item, Dr. Wonderlich.
Thank you. I want to talk to you about our Reading with Wilbur series, that began about a year ago with Waterford Reads. And Waterford Reads was our 3rd grade reading guarantee, and one of the things that we really knew we wanted to do was connect with families prior to them coming to the school district. So we wanted to, you know, kids that are in strollers, coming into a business, we wanted to be able to connect with them, and connect them to some of the programs that we have going on at Stepansky, where you don't even have to be 3 years old. We've got programs where mom or dad can come with their youngest kids and learn how to read with them. And so we thought one of the ways to do that would be to produce a book that we could give out through businesses to families and kids that maybe we haven't connected with because they're too young to come to any of our programs. So through the curriculum department, Megan Cortland's class at Mott High School was volunteers to write the book, and you have a copy of the book in front of you, Wilbur's Wonderful Day. So this was done by Megan's class, and Megan, in fact, is here and back. And Megan, if you could come forward, I just want to tell you thank you. We have a certificate here for you, certificate of appreciation and recognition of your contributions to the Waterford School District through Wilbur the Wombat. So come on up and get a certificate there. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. So her class did a fantastic job, as you can see from the book. And what was really great about it was an entire class project, and once they were nearing the completion stage, they took it on test drives out at our elementary schools. And so they came into elementary classes, and they read the book to the classes, and they got suggestions on how the book might be refined or changed, or what might happen next in the series. And then one of our Waterford-Mott students did the illustration, and they're, they were in Gary Mudd's classroom, she's now graduated, and I believe at Grand Valley, but she did a fantastic job on this. So it was a real effort at Mott in producing the book, as from writing and illustrations, and taking it out to our elementaries to see what it was like. So the book just, is just published, just last week, and in fact, I think it was just yesterday when we got a bunch of big boxes full of them here, so we can now do the project that we had conceptualized just one, one year ago. And we absolutely loved the character of Wilbur the Wombat that the students at Mott had created. And we were lucky enough, through the Waterford Foundation, to get a grant from the AT&amp;T Foundation to make Wilbur not just a book, but a video series. And we thought that was another way to try to reach those folks that maybe we don't always reach with kids that are too young to come to our school programs, that we could do it through YouTube. So we, the grant was enough that we could produce a 5- to 6-minute episode of Reading with Wilbur, and the first one was launched last week, September 8th, and there'll be a new one every 2 weeks for an entire year. The nice thing about this, this also involved elementary students. We had, our hostess is a student from Grayson Elementary, and then we had students from the Kettering Broadcasting Class that did the filming and worked on the editing, as well as Jane T. Kelly, who worked on the editing as well. So we'll see, every 2 weeks, an episode, we're not gonna show you a whole episode, but we'll show you a trailer of what the pieces will look like. So lots of great things. The first episode was very well received, and we encourage people to go to readingwithwilbur.com to find that episode, as well as others. We had five main goals in mind for the Reading with Wilbur series. The main one was to, you know, get kids interested in reading. Wilbur's a great character, and we love him, and we think kids will love him, too, and be able to have the book available, and it'd be a Waterford-produced and kind of promoting book. You'll notice that's a Waterford school bus on the front cover there. And so, you know, that was the main thing. We also wanted to interest parents in Waterford and connect them to our programs, like I had said before. We wanted to make sure that they knew that, you know, Waterford was, you had reading as the number-one goal, and wanted to make sure that all our youngest students were exposed to it. And to connect them to Stepansky even before they're old enough is one of our main objectives as well. We also thought it would lead to some great positive community, public relations, because we are gonna be involving area businesses with the books, and so it'll give us a connection with them as well. So often we go just for the donation. This is gonna be nice for us to be able to go give them something that they can then give away. And then we're also monetizing the videos, and we hope that it could be a revenue stream that we haven't had in the district before through YouTube. So if people go to readingwithwilbur.com, they'll find the episodes there. There's also reading strategies that parents can use with their sons and daughters, and then there's also opportunities, if people are interested in the book, Wilbur's Wonderful Day, that's available through the website as well. We also, at our elementaries and middle schools, have a Reading with Wilbur poster up, advertising the show, as well as the website, so that is available, that is available, too. So we're really excited about it all. What started as, you know, an idea a year ago is now all of a sudden happening with the book and the videos, and we're very excited and really hope that we'll be able, a year from now, to tell you, you know, how many very young children have been exposed to reading, and to Wilbur, and to Waterford, as a result of this effort. Want to thank Megan for getting this all started with her kids over at Mott, also Gary for the, you know, amazing artwork, Jane T. Kelly for all her help from the very technical level, Megan right here, who does a lot of the legwork to get all of these kinds of things done, and of course, the Waterford Foundation. We wouldn't have been able to do the videos without the Foundation helping us with the AT&amp;T grant. So we're very excited, and we can't wait for Episode 2 to come out.
Thank you. Any comments from board members on this? John, Paul?
I want to tell Keith, actually, I tested it this week with my 2-year-old. So we put it on, and she was, she was actually loving it. And that little monkey is actually Keith's voice, I believe, is it?
I think it is.
Yeah. And I recognized, I recognized it, and my wife was like, you know, we were listening to it, and my daughter was watching it, and I said, "That's Keith. It's gotta be Keith." And then I read the Oakland Press article, and then, you know, but this is really an amazing thing. It's a really great opportunity for kids to get connected with Waterford before they actually get into the school district, get the community involved. And, you know, as a young family myself, with a 2-year-old, you know, one of the things that, when I interact with parents in the community, and they're looking to bring their kids into the schools, you know, we always want to make sure that, you know, they know about Waterford Schools. There's choices outside of Waterford, obviously, depending upon where you live, where you could send your kid, and it's always nice, because you want to catch them early and get them, so that they keep their kids in the school district. And I think this is a great opportunity to do that, and this is really an excellent piece. And it works, 'cause my 2-year-old loved it. She watched it all the way through, and she's gonna, "I'm gonna read this to her tonight", and we're doing Waterford Reads, we're up to four books a night, and she's negotiating now, yeah, and it's, it works. It's expanding her vocabulary, we're following the rules and explaining things to her, and it's, you know, try it with your little ones, if you have them, 'cause it's working.
Awesome.
What else?
I read through the book, it's excellent. It's a great stimulator of conversations with kids who are having anxiety about the first day of school, and I know this is, it, not only you read to your kid, you can have conversations with your kids. And I was at school, so it wasn't Waterford Schools, but I was at school's opening day, seeing the kindergartens, and seeing the anxiety, more on the parent's side than on the student's side, but I think it would help for students, incoming students and their parents, to read this book, and just be aware that, you know, school's not that scary place if we, if we all know where we're going and what's gonna happen when we get there. And so it's, the creativity and the story that's being told is, is a good story for all young, parents of young children.
She did a great job with her kids.
Yeah. They get it, yeah, that's good.
And just to add to that, the book actually also rhymes, and it's so well-written in terms of the flow and the syntax, and I just thought it was really an extraordinary job. Your students did an amazing job, and such, something that they can always look back and be so proud of. So thank you to your students and to you for making that happen.
And please share the video with your friends, with your families. Hit it on Facebook, let it go viral.
That's right. That's what we're hoping. Where do I go to get the book signed? I need all the people to sign it.
Go to Mott.
We'll have to get a list of Wilbur appearances, so. It's not on the website yet.
I want to get all of some things.
Okay, I hate to be a buzz killer or anything, but now we have a roll call vote for the Board of Education to recess into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, so we're gonna go away for a little, hopefully just a little bit, and have a discussion. But we'll take the, no actions will be taken during executive session, but hopefully we'll be just a short period and come right back. Roll call, Secretary Holes?
Member Torres?
Yes. I guess the motion is to go into executive session. We need a motion in a second, so someone can make that.
I move that we move into executive session.
A second.
Thank you. No, sorry.
Sorry. Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Patricia?
Yes.
Member Sutherland?
Yes.
Mr. Cedarland?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Mr. Piggott?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelsbaugh?
Yes.
Convened. Are we ready? We're ready? Okay. The regular reading is reconvened. We will now take audience comments on action items. We don't have any green cards. I don't know if anyone's here that wants to speak on an action item. If not, we will move on. Approval of the minutes, Secretary Holes.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the August 18th, 2016 regular meeting, and the August 22nd, 2016 study session. I so move.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, see if you can get by by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Accounts payable. Treasure Himmelsbaugh.
To recommend the Board of Education approve the check register for the month of August 2016, as listed on pages 1 through 90. The fifth third account statement for the year ending 2015-16, as listed on pages 1 through 9, per the attached reports of the September 15th, 2016 board materials. General fund checks in the amount of $2,835,894. Bond capital project series V in the amount of $42,138.89. Food service checks in the amount of $44,881.30. Purchasing cards in the amount of $15,242.16. For the 15-16 school year, general fund checks in the amount of $316,897.44. Bond capital project series V in the amount of $343,994.30. Food service checks in the amount of $47.75. Invoices have been processed by accounts payable and purchasing per requisitions by the various departments. All are with the prescribed budget allocations. I so move.
Support.
Motion's been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? Bill, is this probably the last we're gonna see from 15-16 budget year, or still got a few? I think the auditors are here, right?
They're here, they're here right now, so yes. I hope so.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
We're in receipt of a financial statement for the 2 months ending August of 2016.
Thank you, Treasure Himmelsbaugh. New business, Secretary Holes.
Superintendent's Recommendation 24-16-17, resignations and retirements. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the resignations and retirements as listed in the packet and available online. I so move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Superintendent's Recommendation 25-16-17, teaching contract changes and appointments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the teaching contract changes and appointments for the 2016-2017 school year, as presented in the packet before us and online. I so move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to all those newly appointed employees.
And welcome.
And welcome. Glad you're here.
Superintendent's Recommendation 26-16-17, tentative agreement, Waterford Federation of Support Personnel. It is recommended... It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached tentative agreement with the Waterford Federation of Support Personnel, WFSP, pending ratification by its membership. I so move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Patricia?
I don't believe I'm able to vote on this. I believe my sister-in-law is part of this group, so I will be abstaining.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries 6-0 with one abstention.
Superintendent's Recommendation 27-16-17, Resolution Cell Tower Lease. The administration recommends the approval of the attached resolution of the proposed cell tower facility at the high school site as well as the terms and conditions of the lease agreement. Furthermore, the superintendent or his designee is hereby authorized to finalize and execute the lease agreement with Verizon as well as any and all documents necessary and incidental to said lease agreement on behalf of the school district. Documents have been reviewed by legal counsel and have found to be in full conformance with the agreements previously presented to the Board of Education for consideration. I so move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. And are there any comments or questions? Joan?
After having traveled over to my lovely alma mater at Waterford Mott and seeing the cell tower that is there, I am actually not supportive of this particular recommendation. My concerns are both from an aesthetic nature and what it would mean to add another tower to that, given that we have these beautiful facilities and tennis courts back there. And I just don't want to detract from student learning and athletics with another cell tower. And I also have concerns relative to the longevity of the contract, given that in this particular environment that we are in in public education, it is difficult for us to look down the road even five years. A 25-year, this is a 100-year commitment, if I'm not mistaken, and it's with 25-year renewal. So for at least 25 years we're in this. And I just would be, as a steward of this community and of the school district, I believe that that is just too far out for us to know what 25 years from now looks like and to be making a commitment for our community that stretches that far into the future. So for those reasons, I am not supportive of this particular recommendation.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm kind of torn because, I mean, I went over there again and looked at it, and I feel like, is one more gonna make a huge difference? On the other hand, it's kind of, to me, like, we have, you know, 46 Rite-Aids and 46 CVSs. Do we really need another one in the township? So I'm kind of struggling with this one. I can see kind of both perspectives of it, but it's definitely not particularly attractive to have another one of those there. And I agree with Joan in that, you know, 25 years out is a really long time to be able to predict what it's gonna look like at that point. So I think I'm, at this point, feeling like I can't support it.
Okay. Mr. Patricia?
I am in support of it because, again, if we don't build it there, it'll be built somewhere else. So again, it's the pleasing of seeing it. It could be your backyard. It's just like when we closed schools. You can do it anywhere, just don't do it here. There's already one cell tower there. And again, the length, it's kind of like when we do our bond issues. We go into debt for a long time. Just because we're gonna spend a bunch of money in five years doesn't mean it's paid off. We still have that debt. So we are in the long-term type business, for me. It's a revenue source. It gets me something. And it's, if I don't get it, someone else will. So that's why I'm in support of it.
Okay.
It's kind of gonna look ugly wherever it goes, but...
Anyone else?
I think just from a revenue source, though, just to be clear, it is such a small, tiny amount compared...
It's nominal, but it's something.
Right.
We're not paying out. We're getting something back.
Okay. We just take turns. Mr. Pigott?
Yeah. Up until the last few days, I was probably wavering the same way kind of as Mrs. Halls and Mrs. Sutherland. I felt there was one there. We had the big, beautiful field, and it was kind of right there looking at it. And then, two, I wasn't sure about the amount of money. And it is revenue, and it's revenue coming in that will help buy books and will help have programs. But when I ran for school board, I had made a comment six years ago that if I had a vote that I was wondering about, I would go out to the community, and I would talk to some people that I know, and parents, and people in the community to get their feedback and what they felt. And so I did that over the course of the last week. And really, the majority of everyone I spoke with basically said, "There's one there now, and it's probably gonna pop up somewhere real close. And if it's going to bring money into this district..." And certainly, I've always been the one, too, that money is not the almighty final decision. But I think in this case, listening to the community and listening to the people that I've spoke with, I think almost everyone I talked to said, "Why not? If it's going to bring money in, and it's certainly not a lot, but it's not a little either." And so they were under the impression that we should absolutely allow it, and let's go for it. And so tonight, I will be in support of it.
I have a question, actually. Does the money get allocated into one particular area? Does it just go into general, the income that we get from it? Does it go...
It'll just go right to the general fund.
Right to the general fund?
It's part of balance in the budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Torres?
Just kind of what Mr. Pigott said as well. I've asked around the community. I haven't had any negative feedback, per se, about it. We have one there already. It's an opportunity to generate some revenue. And where it's at geographically located, we can't always just put one anywhere. You know, this is an opportunity where we could generate some revenue, and we can't do it at Kettering, as what I've been told, is because it's, there's no interest there for it because of where Mott is located. So I haven't heard much negative feedback from the community, and I do see it as a revenue source, and we have one there already. So I'm gonna support it.
And we're in discussion. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Those opposed? 5 to 2. Thank you. Discussion items. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on October... Did I skip something? Sorry, John. You're B.
I got some buses to buy here. Superintendent's Recommendation 28-16-17, Purchase of Buses. The administration recommends the purchase of 10 diesel buses and 10 propane buses as follows. 7 54-passenger diesel buses from Capital City for a total of $610,015. 3 54-passenger diesel ortho and AC buses for a total amount of $284,505. And 10 77-passenger propane buses from Holland, total amount $928,320. The deliveries are posted by December 16th. Funding source is the 2016 bond series 1. And all, a copy of all bids are included in the packet, and I so move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? Seen none? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now I can say it. Discussion items. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on October 6th. We will hear from the Mott Drum Line. So bring your earplugs or just that. They're gonna be loud. I'm not saying they're gonna be bad. They're gonna be loud. I've heard the drum line. They're good, yeah. Yeah. About Mott's upcoming production of arsenic and old lace. We will also hear information on the Head Start budget, construction and the results of the short-term borrowing. Are there any Board of Education reports? Mr. Pigott?
I was going to speak about the football game last Friday and the one at Kettering tomorrow until Bill stole my thunder earlier. But I will say the one thing about the Mott game last Friday, that the jerseys, they sell jerseys ahead of time for $100 apiece that the football players wear. And then afterward, I believe, those get presented to the people whose names are on the back. And this year, the proceeds went to a Waterford family, a gentleman who was in the Marines. He has a student at Beaumont and one that graduated last year. So that's wonderful for there. And then, of course, for... Bless you.
Thank you.
For Kettering tomorrow, same deal. Jerseys are sold with names on the back of people who you want to honor. And the proceeds and any donations tomorrow will go to local VFW Post 1008, which I assume is here in Waterford. So great time tomorrow night. It was a great game last week, by the way, with a big Mott victory. And also, the really awesome Kettering dance team will be performing tomorrow night as well. And so come out. It's a great night, a great time in the community, and it's a great night.
Do you know anybody in that group?
On the dance team?
Mm-hmm.
I do. Someone, yes.
Any other board reports? Okay, we'll move to audience comments on non-action items. I don't have any green cards for non-action items either. I don't know if anyone wants to give comments to the board, but we're here for you. I guess not. Then we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Wonderlick?
Thank you. Just want to thank everybody for a great start to the school year. It's been wonderful, been around all the buildings and to see everything that's happened. Was not without some challenges. Right at meet-and-greet night, we had a pipe break underneath the floor in a classroom at Beaumont. So I want to give a shout-out to our custodial maintenance folks who got in there, fixed it, put in new concrete. They couldn't use it for meet-and-greet night, but it was all back and ready to go for the first day of school. Same thing at Mason. In fact, our Barton Mallow, our contractor, complimented our custodial maintenance staff for the great job that they did following them from room to room and getting every room ready after the new air conditioning units were installed. And so just, you know, the buildings looked great, and everything was wonderful. So just want to thank everybody for a great start and all of the different employee groups that helped to make it a successful start to a brand-new school year. We're excited. It's a weekend, and we're already rolling, and things are looking great. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Wonderlick. The meeting is now adjourned.